Okay, good afternoon everyone. So it's 3:05 PM. So let's start with the EEE Town Hall meeting for EEE 135 and 145. Okay, to start off, of course, I'm Kudina Duma, the Student Alumni Relations Officer from the institute, and today we'll be discussing the guidelines and the requirements of this courses. So just a gentle reminder for everyone, so please always address everyone in a courteous manner. Please have your microphone on mute at all times unless acknowledged or you are called to speak. And of course, this meeting is recorded and posted online for information dissemination purposes. For today's agenda, so first we'll be having the discussion on EEE 135, and then right after that we'll have the discussion for 145. And of course, we have an open Q&amp;A for those students who may have additional questions or concerns about the matters discussed. So for the EEE 135 for this term, we have Sir Adrian Vidal, one of the course handlers of this course. Sir Adrian?
Hi, hello. Reni Nobal.
Yes, yes.
So next slide. Okay, so I just want to remind everyone of the timeline. Twelve days from now will be middle of the mid-year. And essentially, we have the timeline of mid-year in this case. We have a short reading break, three days lang. So this slide illustrates a major tight schedule in the mid-year. So that informs our decisions, and we had to make compromises to streamline what is supposedly semester-long offering of electromagnetic fields. Next slide. 135 handlers will be composed of a team of six handlers, starting with Sir Paul in alphabetical order, Sir JB, Sir Chad, Sir Greg, Sir Donis, and yours truly. Next slide. So to streamline 135 electromagnetic fields for mid-year offering, we had to make certain assumptions. First, one of our main assumptions is that students have taken Physics 72 and Math 23. This is an assumption made because EEE 135 and 145 are essentially delayed until this mid-year. So when it was proposed that they will be moved to this mid-year, we are assuming na nakapagtaing new students to Math 23. So because of this assumption, it allowed us to make the offering of 135 in a more streamlined and more unified manner. So also because of this, there is an expected Math 23 background. We expect that most of the calculations have already been done there. So this mid-year's offering of 135 will focus less on the mundane vector calculations of divergence, curl, and gradient. Instead, treat them as black box operations, for the most part, so that students can focus on modeling and solving actual practical problems. Of course, Physics 72 is a prerequisite. So regardless of the first bullet assumptions, Physics 72 dapat may familiarity na with electric field and magnetic field. And familiar dapat sa Maxwell's equations in free space in integral form. Next slide. Again, to streamline 135, we are incorporating computer exercises so that students can make a connection between the written exercises and complement that with computer exercises so that they can verify or at least increase their understanding of the concepts. Kasi for the most part, 135 has been a very dry mathematical course. So we wanted to include computer exercises para mas madali ang appreciation ng students. There's a baseline expectation when it comes to MATLAB skills. We hope you are familiar with doing loops, working with vectors and matrices, and working with figures, as well as functions. For EEE 135 in particular, we will be dealing with vector fields and scalar fields. The use of MATLAB here will be mostly for visualization. So we need to have a way to visualize vector fields and scalar fields. And one toolbox that can help us do that is the partial differential equations toolbox. That sounds mouthful, but do not worry, we will treat this mostly as a black box. Our toolbox here is under consideration for a certain topic in 135 later. Baparikan ko tamangay. Okay, so the second bullet is mostly for students who want to work offline. Because when you install MATLAB, even with the academic license, you will need to have this option selected. Kapag napapinsan ngayon MATLAB, you just need to install this as an add-on. As long as you are in a UP webmail account or EEE account, you should be able to download these toolboxes. If you prefer to work offline so that you don't have to install these toolbox again, you can use this website for an online access to MATLAB. Just need to use your EEE account when signing up. Next slide. So student worko, something students need to be aware of. 135 is organized as five modules, where one module roughly corresponds to a week. And the mid-year is supposedly seven weeks. The remaining weeks will be mostly used as a catch-up period because things can get out of sync. Students can expect 10 hours worth of student effort per week, and roughly you can think of it in terms of 4/3 to 1 division. So four hours will be worth for video resources. That is equivalent to two hours of video runtime. May lang times to multiply, kasi students sometimes need to replay. Three hours is allotted for computer exercise. Roughly this corresponds to, say, a lab unit. Two hours will be allotted for written exercise. We are designing written exercises to be doable in two hours, hopefully not in lax way. And one hour will be allotted for reading assignments. Yeah. So for each module, each module will have 20 points. So in total, we have 100 points, and it will be divided as follows. May update dapat sa slide na'to, but let me just point out. So the 20 points may be divided arbitrarily. So it could be the case na puro computer exercise lang 'yung 20 points. It could be the case na 20 points will be written exercise lang, or any combination. So itong 10 points and 10 points, masyado siyang rigid. Basta 'yung magiging idea is pwede makaroon ng partial written and partial computer exercise. Intention namin for 135 mid-year is even if hindi created in computer exercise, magkakaroon ng computer exercise per module so that merong kayong parang enhanced conceptual understanding of what happens, what's happening in the subject. We've also decided to make use of automated OBL exercises. And that exercise may be taken at most three times. And highest score will be recorded. Each module will have suggested deadlines. If you've been taking remote courses lately, this should not be new. Pero I just want to add that this time, these are very strongly suggested deadlines. Because this is a mid-year offering mahirap. Mahirap, medyo mahirap mag-umabol, kung sakaling naglalagbahan. So we expect students to do their very best to stay on track. If life gets in the way, whatever happens, just let us know kung hindi ka makahabol dun sa deadline. We are willing to listen. Next. Yeah, so here's a top view of 135. So ang idea dito is to leverage basic familiarity of Physics 72 and Math 23. Okay, so Math 23, you are taught basics, important urems in vector calculus like Stokes' theorem and divergence theorem. And you are also taught the three important vector operators, divergence, curl, and gradient. So Physics 72 naman, you don't have much of that vector field view. You just have this block box idea na merong macroscopic properties ang electromagnetic fields. Those are given by Maxwell's equations in integral form. 135 is essentially a combination of 72 and Math 23 in that regard. We will zoom in. So from a macroscopic point of view in Physics 72, we go to the microscopic. We will zoom in into the vector field point of view of electromagnetic fields. We follow that up with transmission lines. Hopefully, this students will find this interesting. Kasi this is where you learn that circuits, when they are quite small comparison with wavelength, meron siyang traveling wave characteristics. So this is something used at 135, 90% sa 72 versus circuit theory. And then we will expose you to using the partial differential equations toolbox, which allows you to solve vector fields. So we will do our best na i-offload na 'yung mga mundane vector calculus operations to MATLAB so that you can actually see things happening. And lastly, Module 5 is intended as a bookend or a reference to Module 2. So the Module 2 might introduce a new idea, namely traveling waves, circuits, under certain conditions. And as a part of 5, we will go back to this idea, namely traveling waves. Pero this time, in free space or in dielectric media. Yeah. So this figure is an example of what you can achieve with the partial differential equations toolbox. And 135 this mid-year will be essentially potential-driven. What I mean, think of potential as electric potential. So basically, potentials are all you need. With potential, sky 'yung makalpait ang vector fields. Kung paano nangyayari 'yun, itutoro 'yun sa 135. So there will be less emphasis on forces. So sa Physics 72, you were taught na electric fields are essentially motivated by action at the distance due to a charge. Ganun is magnetic field, that it can move moving charges. Wala masyado emphasis on that, so 135 this mid-year. Again, we are identifying certain concepts na pwede na i-relegate to other subjects. In this case, sa Physics 72 'yun. And so 145, you will have your fair share of interaction between the electromagnetic field and the mechanical side. And again, third bullet, it's with the computer exercises. Hopefully, you appreciate more 'yung block box property ng divergence, curl, and gradient in describing vector fields. And you won't get frustrated in just trying to solve the curl of a certain complicated expression. Next slide. So this is the last slide. So from the top view, we identified core topics. So here's what 135 will look like. Yeah, so number one will be a common point of reference for everyone. Kapag may vectors theorem coming, in invoke some modules 2 to 5, we will direct you to Module 1. And part of Module 1, Module 1 will contain parang review, parang a digest of what you've learned from Physics 72 and the most important parts of Math 23. Yeah. So yeah, I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Sir Adrian. So for the students who may have questions or comments, you may comment in the chat box, and we'll read it later. Or maybe Sir Adrian could also answer directly through the chat box. And later, we will also have the open Q&amp;A. So now we move on to the discussion of EEE 145, care of Sir Jordan Oriyaza.
Hi, Magandang hapon, Claude. Good afternoon sa lahat ng mga kasama natin ngayong hapon na ito. And in the next couple of minutes, I'd be presenting an overview and what to expect for EEE 145 this mid-year. Sige, Claude. Next slide. Thank you. So the title of the course is "Electromechanical Energy Converters." Mahaba-haba 'yung pamagat na 'yan. Pero simply put, basically, we're looking at devices. Electrical devices primarily, but it has a moving part. So in the slide here, so we have an electrical device, but it has a moving part there. So we differentiate between the electrical component and the mechanical component of the device. But right in the middle of it is a coupling field. It could be a magnetic field or an electric field. So you kinukwento ni Sir Adrian kanina about EM. Yun 'yung overlap ng 135 tsaka 145. So again, next slide, Claude. So sana may clear lang 'yung presentation namin. Tapos, we welcome comments under presentation. We'll introduce ourselves. Sige po, okay na 'yan, Claude. So likewise, there are six course handlers po for EEE 145. There are 12 sections altogether. So as of right now, all the 12 sections have been filled muna. Pero marami pa nakapila, so they can easily be accommodated in those 12 sections. So kung naka-enroll na kayo, naka-enlist na kayo by now, well and good. Kung hindi pa kina-enlist, but you have attended this meeting, we can assure you that you should be able to, we can accommodate you for EEE 145. So there are six sections in the morning. Two of those will be handled by myself, ako si Jordan Oriyaza. Hindi pa ako nagpakilala pala, ano? So that's my email address there. 'Yung X1-1 tsaka X2-1 will be under me. And then I promise to reply every day, 8 to 12 noon, nakabantay lang po ako, to reply to emails. The other four sections po will be handled by Brian Dastas. The next would be by Sir Russell Galiano. Unfortunately, they cannot join us this afternoon. The afternoon sections, we have three more course handlers. Si Joshua Ramos, 'yung isa, and he's here right now. Joshua, bakit ka naman, kung may camera ka, you can turn it on.
Hello, hello sa inyong lahat. I am Justin Joshua Ramos, pero you can call me Joshua. And I'll be one of your instructors for 135 days coming mid-year. So good afternoon, and thank you for attending this meeting session.
Thank you, Joshua, thank you. Kasama rin natin ngayong hapon si Alfie Miras. Alfie?
You know, it might be really interesting.
Hello, good afternoon. So cellphone si Miras, 'yung name ko na. But just call me Alfie Miras.
Doing that meeting, or if not, si Goel should be there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alfie. And then Sir Bert Devilia.
Hi, Magandang hapon po sa lahat. Sorry, medyo may issues 'yung camera ako, kaya hindi ko siya mapapabuksan sa ngayon. Pero yeah, hello everyone.
Thank you, Sir Bert. So kung enrolled na kayo, talan mo na 'yung section ninyo. So you should be able to find your course handler from these pictures here. If you're still about to enroll, so basically, sana makuha niyo 'yung section trang schedule na gusto ninyo. But the main idea kasi, we want to balance out the investment. So we want to fill in all 12 sections at the same time. Kaya dahan-dahan po niya lagyan. Namaste, John. Sige, Claude, next slide po. So just a quick overview. Sir Adrian mentioned kanina that there are seven weeks for the mid-year, including the reading break. So mas mabait sila sa amin, 135 prepared for a five-week term. Kami six weeks, 'yung term na it's a 145. So there are six weeks here. These are basically just simple diagrams of what's covered in these six weeks. Next slide, I applaud, and I'll show the outline. So basically, ito na 'yung gist nung discussion natin ngayong araw na ito. On the first column there is the week number, the dates, and then who's gonna handle this. So basically, there are six handlers that you've learned kanina. So we are in charge of one week each. So for example, ako, I'm in charge for Week 1. So I would be preparing all the learning materials for Week 1, the activities, and then assessments. So the topic is shown there, I'll explain that a little bit more mamaya. And then the activities are shown here as well. And then at the end of that week, then this will be the assessments that will be available. For example, in my case, for Week 1, one-page report. And then there are quizzes on L and C calculation. So if you notice, for Week 1, it's all about computing inductance L and capacitance C. Apparently, there is a moving part there in our converter. So that will be scheduled on July 5 tonight. We really encourage students to complete all the requirements for Week 1 during Week 1. So kung quizzes po 'yun, we wanted to finish all the quizzes in Week 1. And then Week 2 is Sir Bert's ang handler nun, so he's preparing all the materials. But of course, your course handler are available there as well. So kung ako 'yung sections ko, I would still be there to pick up some slack. Pero 'yung main material is prepared by Sir Bert for Week 2. And then Week 3, si Brian na magasukas nun, and that's the date over there. You're familiar with the reading break. It's scheduled July 29 to 30. Pero for 145, we won't have anything throughout that week. So basically, after Week 3, you have a one full week po of reading break, basically. So no new material on that first half of Week 3. Ideally, we have already completed all the weekly materials and all the weekly assessments. Pero kung sakaling gusto 'yung gamitin 'yung reading break na 'yun, the entire week para sa catch-up ng unang tatlong weeks, pwede naman nating gawin 'yun. Pwede pag-usapan 'yun. You can request, and then we can open up the activities again. And then followed by next three weeks, the Weeks 4, 5, and 6 accordingly. So the topics are shown here. And activities are practically the same. So if you've noticed, the main material that we're going to provide to you are slides with notes. So basically, you have the slides there, and then we type our comments as course handlers on how to appreciate and make sense out of what's there in the notes. Problem solving is provided. Some of us will be preparing lecture videos to supplement the problem-solving discussion there. Again, leading to mostly online quizzes at the end of each week. So that's Week 6 over there, that's supposedly the end of the semester in terms of lectures. Week 7, which is the week after August 20, I schedule this final week for the mid-year. So similar to the first half of the first three weeks, that seventh week can actually serve as catch-up for any material that hasn't been finished for the final three weeks. So you can look at this, three weeks break, and then three weeks finals. So that's how we've arranged at the mid-year. So again, next slide, Claude. Uh, so again, next slide, Claude. Uh, so as far as delivery is concerned, so uh, course is mostly asynchronous. Actually, mga ninety percent it was synchronous. And as I said earlier, slides plus notes uh, will be provided at the start of the week, and then you work on it the rest of the week. Uh, for the problem solving, we will try to prepare some videos to guide you as you solve the problems. Uh, consultation is viable. So if you have questions in any part of the material, you post it in the UGLE forum. Uh, anonymous posting is allowed. Uh, pero we encourage posting in the forum so that everybody can benefit from your questions. Most likely, your concern is common and is shared by your friends and your classmates as well. So that will be beneficial to everyone. If you really want to send us email, uh, we will provide our email addresses. You can send the email either to your section handler. So kung section X1 dash 1, ako po yon. Pero you can also direct your email to the course handler for the week. So week one ako, pero pag-week two, kay Sir Bert's email yon. So these emails are welcome at any time. Uh, we, we showed earlier what time do we commit to, to check our emails and to reply to emails. Claude, pabalik nga po dun sa pictures po ng mga handler. For example, in my case, I'm committed at eight to twelve in the morning. Nakaabang lang ako, if you have emails, then I will reply accordingly. If you send an email in the afternoon, ako, commitment ko is bukas ko ng umaga ulit mubuksan yon. Uh, some of our course handlers po are uh, senior lecturers who have jobs din po sa, we have day jobs as well. So they're put here, uh, they can reply to your emails uh, four to seven in the afternoon. So things like nine to seven to nine ng gabi. Pero yun po 'yung uh, turnaround time po ng mga forums at saka ng mga emails po natin. Hopefully, it's not too bad for, for you as well. Sige Claude, balik na tayo. Thank you, Claude. Yeah, assessments likewise will happen via UGLE. Uh, quizzes are online quizzes. Automatic scoring po yon, some are multiple choice, others are uh, fill in the blanks. Mostly problem solving, but the final answer will be submitted as a, as, well, final answer nalang po, uh, the solution will not be marked anyway, anymore. Uh, we have, we will be requesting, collecting reports as well. Uh, this will be manually marked by the course handlers, but still submitted via UGLE. Uh, some of us, uh, including myself, uh, is preparing to hold a live lecture uh, on week one. So I will, I intend to hold it eight AM. May clear lang yon, fifteen to thirteen minutes lang yon on that day. Uh, para ikwento na sa mga studiante on, on the material for that week. If, if one of us is gonna do that, uh, then I can repeat that on a ten AM session. So basically, all sections are invited, kahit afternoon section kayo, kahit morning section, you can attend one of these sessions here, either eight AM or ten AM. Kaya sabi ko, ninety percent asynchronous to, baka isa, dalawa lang ito throughout the semester, and then the rest will be asynchronous na. Sige Claude, next slide. Uh, as far as online quizzes is concerned, uh, dahil one week lang talaga 'yung allotment po nam, natin, we think that two attempts uh, is sufficient. Uh, so you have two attempts to try the quiz, and then of course, the higher score will be credited to you. Uh, nakita ko 'yung slide nila sa, sa 135, uh, three attempts daw 'yung kanila. Uh, two attempts lang munang 145. Kung merong clamor for three attempts, we might consider that. Uh, but let's keep in touch if you think two attempts is not sufficient. Uh, in case you fail to finish within the week, uh, we may reopen quizzes upon, under special request. So again, uh, by July, June, uh, July, August, baka maraming bagyo, may power loss. Uh, inian niyo na po kami kung sa lugar ninyo may bagyo, hindi ka pagawa. Uh, and then we'll open, reopen quizzes specifically for you. So hindi reopen for everybody according to the request lang po, 'yung mga reopening the quizzes. Likewise, uh, uh, group reports. Uh, we mentioned that there could be reports to be submitted. Uh, for example, in my case, uh, for week one, there's a one-page report on in converters. Uh, another one in week two, another one in week six, mostly uh, these are computing exercises, and you'd be asked to submit reports. Uh, parang laboratory report ito. Uh, we allow you to work in groups of up to three members, but we specify, we prescribe that all members should be from the same section. So kung alam niyo na, 'yung makaibigan ninyo, if you know that they are from the same sections, so 145, uh, huddle together, pag-usapan niyo na how you can work together uh, for these reports here. Uh, for week five, mayroon ding maliit na reports, may clear lang daw tong gawin, kaya ambili ni Sir Alfie, kaya to individual reports, individual report yon. So again, these will all combine to, to, uh, this will all contribute to your final grade. Uh, basically, as far as grades are concerned, again, there are six weeks for this, or six modules. Equal weights lang po 'yung six modules na yon. Uh, mas madali yun kay Sir Adrian kanina, lima lang yon, kaya twenty percent each. Uh, kami, yun, divide by six, 'yung final grade natin. Whatever accomplishment you, you, you do for that week, and that should be, that should constitute one-sixth of your final grade, whether in terms of quizzes or in terms of reports. Sige, Claude, next slide na po. Uh, so, ang bilin lang namin, uh, the prerequisite for this course is really Physics 72. So ako tulad ng bagay to Sir Adrian, you might want to brush up on your Physics 72. Uh, 'yung first material, which is common for 135 and 145 would be electric field and magnetic fields. So basically, we start with capacitance calculations, if you can go back to your Physics 72, balikan 'yung Goeslaw, balikan 'yung electric potential, that would really be helpful for all of us. Likewise, we talk about inductance, so balikan 'yung magnetic field, then magnetic induction. So if you have that in Physics 72, that will be useful here as well. Again, as shown in the diagram at the lower corner. Uh, so it's all about electrical devices that has a moving part, and that conversion from electrical to mechanical energy happens within the magnetic field or electric field. Kaya namin pinagsabay po ang 135 tsaka 145 sa mid-year. As far as context is concerned, both of these are discussing electric fields and magnetic fields. So hopefully, uh, masaya naman tungwa't to mid-year ninyo, and these two courses, which features six units altogether, uh, they complement each other. Sige, I think last slide na yata 'yan. Uh, so this our last slide, baka ko ambilin ko na lang. Uh, you notice here upper right corner, uh, as soon as we finish this meeting, uh, we encourage you to be aware of the devices. Uh, we usually call these transducers, that are electrical in nature but have moving parts. So, nasa bahay tayo palay-palay, tinignan niyo na sa bahay, ano 'yung mga motorized appliances sa bahay ninyo? Uh, the microphones that we're using right now, and the speakers that we're using, these are electromechanical devices. Uh, circuit breaker, may circuit breakers sa mga bahay natin, kung hindi man fuse. So this is an uh, electromechanical device. There are solenoids that are being used, means and sa robotics. Uh, means and when you want to move something using electrical pulses, then there are solenoids there as well. Of course, motors and generators are the biggest class of these devices. So from here on, we just encourage you to be aware of these devices because these are, this converts energy from electrical to mechanical, of course, vice versa. So we do hope that this mid-year, although mabigat 'yung six units, sana ay uh, kapakipakinabang naman para sa ating hati. It's fulfilling on the materials that we're going to learn this mid-year. And welcome to all of you for the mid-year class. Maraming salamat.
Thank you, Sir Jordan. Okay, so now we have the open Q and A. Um, for those who are watching on Facebook, you may comment your questions or any comments about the presentation. And I think, um, we have one um, question, apart from Facebook. Uh, I think, I believe this is uh, for Sir Jordan. So the question is, what, um, she's, um, he's asking about the rationale behind the same section restriction. Um, it feels like an unnecessary restriction po, Sir Jordan.
Sige, sige, maraming salamat po. Uh, ganito po yon, no? Our reports will be manually marked. Uh, ang nangyayari kasi po 'yan, ako, pagminagsubmit sa akin, and it's a group report, uh, sige, ganito 'yan. Um, I will assess whether, and, and will grade that written report, and I will award, of course, the same grade to all members. Uh, previously, we have cases po that I will mark all this work submitted by students in my sections, and another teacher will mark, but the, the, the submissions in his own sections. So pagka po 'yung report, I got done by students from different sections, hindi namin alam kung sino mag-check non. Or actually, what we did was, uh, the student, that report will be reviewed and marked by both teachers, and both teachers will have to be satisfied accordingly. So in which case, nalugi pa 'yung studiante, so dalawang teachers 'yung kanilang pinagpasahan, dalawa 'yung kailangan mag, maggrade dun sa report po nila. So ganito po yon. Uh, I, I still think that it's a lot more convenient for both of us, for students and teachers as well, if you all belong to the same section. Okay? Kung sakali po na talagang, sir, walang wala po, 'yung kaibigan ko po nasa kabilang section, uh, send us an email, basically, you have to send an email to both section handlers, and then we'll agree accordingly, uh, who will collect, who will manage, and who will mark the submission. Uh, kasi po, at the end of the day, pag nagsubmitin po kami ng final grade, ayaw din namin na nawala 'yung papel. So 'yung sinabmit po ng studiante one, na natsikali section one, baka hindi makita po ng student number two from section number two. So yun po 'yung iniwasan natin. So uh, it's, it's not a necessary requirement, but if you think uh, it will be really difficult for you to comply with these requirements, sige, let's talk about it po, we'll consider accordingly.
Thank you, sir. So, so far, we have no additional comments or questions? Okay, I have my chat box. One question, um, as of right now, there's only one section with an available slot for triple E145 in CRS, with the rest having zero slots. Does the zero available slot mean that the section cannot be granted anymore? Thank you. I think this is for Sir Jordan.
Uh, check ko lang, uh, if I understood the question correctly. So ang impression ba nung studiante, walang slots sa ibang sections?
Yes, sir, kasi um, one section lang po for 145 ang may available slot, and then 'yung other sections po, zero slots na po, so.
Uh, uh, we, we'll have to check po 'yung, 'yung, 'yung process natin for enlisting. So what we have right now, what the triple E has right now, uh, the, all the waitlists are submitted to CRS. And then ang goal po ng triple E ay, ay i-auto-enlist po itong mga waitlist na to. And we would like to enlist evenly across all twelve sections. So kung may nakita man po kayo na parang isang section lang 'yung may slot, may bakante doon, uh, hindi po totoo yon. The goal really is to have all twelve sections with almost or approximately the same number of students enlisted. Ieven out po natin yon.
Okay, sir, so if ever, sir, um, they can just enlist in, kahit anong section po, on CRS, tama po ba?
Eventually po, so, so waitlisting po, they can choose any section that they want. Nakatapos po ay, yon, uh, hindi ko pa alam kung paano 'yung automated enlisting po nagagawa ng triple E registration committee, kung paano ipaprioritize ito. But we, we will, we are actually assuring you right now that there should be enough slots for everyone for triple E courses for mid-year.
Okay, sir, and um, I think last uh, town hall meeting, binpon na mention, all waitlisted students for 135 and 145 will be processed um, until June 25. Yeah, thank you, sir, for the assurance. So um, another question, um, will it be okay then if they're in different CRS sections, but the same handler? I think si.
Uh, thank you, Ian, uh, biligay niya 'yung pangalan niya. Uh, that's a smart question, and yes, apparently that would work. So tama ka naman, ako personally, I have two sections. Uh, it should not be, it should not be a problem if both, uh, if the members of the group are from two sections that I both handled. Uh, sige, iridvice namin 'yung policy, mukhang gagana 'yan, uh, X1 dash 1 and X2 dash 1. Thank you, Ian.
Thank you, sir. Another question, um, just a comment that most students benefit using video lectures during this remote semesters. Just a suggestion that video lectures would be heavily considered for both of these classes. Some classes this sem accomplish this using recorded sync lectures or pre-prepared lectures that go through a lot of examples. So that's the first question from this student. Another, um, would synchronous, uh, sorry, that's a comment. Another question, would synchronous exams be present in both these courses? Since there is preference for students to have a sync exams, but some professors want sync exams. I think this goes for two uh, subjects. Maybe Sir Adrian could adjust the question first?
Um, yon, the inclusion of videos as part of the course is uh, by design included. Kasi meron, for ten hours, uh, four hours is loaded for videos, that's equivalent to, to our SMACs. Um, we are planning to leverage on, uh, search ours on existing triple E135 videos, but of course, we have to possibly complement that with other resources so that, so as to fit the media offering of 135. With regards to asynchronous exams, uh, synchronous exams, um, uh, we have yet to clarify, but uh, so far, for, um, it has, uh, we are under the impression na computer exercises and UGLE exercises lang ang meron. Parang wala kaming one-time big time exam.
Thank you, Sir Adrian. Um, Sir Jordan?
Sige po, uh, wala pong synchronous exam ang 145. So talagang weekly activities po ito, quizzes, online din po, pero asynchronous talaga yon. Uh, as far as videos is concerned, uh, thank you po for the suggestion. We've duly noted that we will try po to prepare videos. Uh, although we agreed po that the basic material pa rin are slides with notes. Actually, uh, nag-adjust na po yon, no una ako nagpo-propose ito readings lahat. Uh, some of you already know me from, from previous classes. Uh, ako po, pagka na, as synchronous readings lahat, book chapters. Uh, pero hindi daw slides daw this 145. I, and we, we're confident po that you will learn a lot from those slides uh, with notes at your own pace. Uh, videos po for a time, we did not prefer that because of uh, bandwidth issue, internet financial issues. Pero po, we've heard you, uh, we'll try our best po to supplement po with videos.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, another comment from Facebook, um, good day, Paul, will there be a Piazza forum as well? It's a bit more conven- convenient to use in comparison to the UGLE forum. Sir Adrian first, maybe?
Um, that, hindi pa namin napag-usapan, noted po. So I am, I will be listening to the recording of this video, so I'm just listening to it.
Okay, thank you, Sir Adrian. Um, Sir Jordan? Will there be Piazza forum din po for 145?
Sige po, uh, personally po, I haven't used Piazza. Uh, I'll check po, uh, if you can send me an email, well, I'll check Piazza after this meeting. Uh, gaano ka nga ba siya kagaling? Uh, but, but, but the last time I asked, kasi po, students preferred Piazza dahil daw madali 'yung anonymous posting. But UGLE has anonymous posting as well, so I thought back then that there's not much uh, advantage to shifting to Piazza. Uh, I haven't, you have, uh, well, I can type my email address. Claude, we can provide email address, no? If you really think that Piazza should be the way to go, uh, I'm willing to listen. Uh, convince me, uh, what Piazza can do that I don't know yet.
Okay, sir. Okay, thank you, Sir. Okay, thank you, Sir Jordan. Um, actually, we have um follow-up comment on Piazza from Facebook. So, uh, he mentioned regarding the Piazza suggestion, mas malinis 'yung interface, and like options to unsubscribe from threads irrelevant to you. So, that's just a additional comment po on that. So, again, if there are still questions or comments, please let us know in the comment box on Facebook or here on Zoom. Again, another comment of recommending Piazza, kasi po, students can answer other students' question po. So, they could, ano din, collaborate in answering questions, so yeah. Okay, well noted po. Yan, si Sir Richard, Piazza is a good forum to facilitate discussions. Yan, okay? Okay. So far, we don't have additional questions. Okay, siguro, kung wala ng additional questions or comments, um, I'll be sharing with you guys again. Uh, we have this um feedback form regarding the mid-year term, and of course, the remote learning curriculum. Please feel free to send your questions, comments about um this town hall and the town hall we held last Monday through this form. Another, um, we also have this end-of-semester student sensing survey. This is available until July, uh, July two. So, um, this is for, this is a venue for students to share their learning experience, especially for this semester. Um, lalo na nakaromote learning setup pa rin tayo. Okay, just check. Okay, um, we just have another uh said, uh, comment about Piazza. So, posting codes and equations are so easy and clean in Piazza. Again, so madami ng reference si Sir Adrian and Sir Jordan about Piazza. Thank you so much. Okay, again, uh, so that's our sensing survey. And lastly, um, of course, um, the institute would also like to improve the services and the assistance that we have for students. So, we launched also the triple E grievance forum, so if you have institute, institute-specific concerns, questions that uh maybe we could assist you, you can use this form as well, okay? So, again, that's, that's everything for this town hall. Thank you so much for taking time and listening to the details of this courses, and we hope uh addressing questions uh for this courses uh in preparation for the mid-year term. Once, once again, thank you, Sir Adrian, Sir Jordan, for discussing this courses. And of course, to all the participants, to all of the twenty-eight participants in Zoom and eighty participants in Facebook, thank you so much for listening and joining us in this town hall. All right, okay, so that ends this meeting. Thank you, and have a great day ahead.